Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is February 10, 2015. And with that, we are at our first public audience. Anyone wishing to address the board may do so. Please state your name and address. And seeing no one at this moment, we will go on to Board and Administrative Communications. And as always, we'll start with our student representative, Brian Johnson.
Hi. So even with all this crazy weather, there's still a lot going on at Simsbury High School. A lot of our sports teams are finishing up their winter season, with many of them going on to play in various state championships. On the other side of the student activity spectrum, this weekend, Thoroughly Modern Millie concluded its two-week run to critical acclaim. Our school seniors have just turned in their final local scholarship applications, so a lot of those scholarships that you all spend a lot of time voting on are now hopefully going to go to deserving students. Speaking of deserving students today, the ASVAB test, the Armed Forces Vocational Aptitude Battery, which I did have to look up, was administered today. So Simsbury High School students who are considering an honorable career in the military took that today, and I want to just personally say thank you to them for taking the first step in this larger career to serve our country.
Good. Thank you, Brian. All right. Susan?
Nothing.
Tom?
Nothing for me.
All set? All set. Thanks.
Tara?
I just want to thank all the people who have been keeping our playgrounds, our sidewalks, our school parking lots clear so that we got back to school on these days after these horrible storms. So I think we're really lucky to have the staff we have to do that work.
We do. And to continue.
Totally impressed.
Great. Thank you.
All set.
Susan. Erin?
Just to remind the board, we have an early release on Friday afternoon pending no snow issues. We have professional development scheduled for our teachers and our administrators at Simsbury High School. They'll be doing some work on close reading. They'll start as a full faculty. They'll break into some small groups and then departmental work for the three hours. Henry James is doing a health and wellness clinic for the three hours. And each of our elementary school, the principals are all here, are doing individual building-based professional development with their teachers. And then, just a reminder, no school on Monday and Tuesday because of the President long weekend.
All righty.
Nothing, Susan?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, one thing, and several of the administrators are here tonight, and I know that they are engaged at this time of the year in what we call our mid-year evaluation conferences. And we've talked quite a bit about this mandate that is now in its second year and that there's a lot of positives to this focus on teacher support and teacher evaluation, but talk about the tenability of it all and the amount of mandated time that our administrators are spending in meetings. So they're responsible to have what basically becomes about a 45-minute conference with each teacher. When you couple that with the interruptions in the snow days and the bumping, it really has taken what can be really almost 30 percent of the entire workload for the year dedicated to this one piece of the mandate. While every administrator will tell you the conversations are valuable, the teachers get great feedback, and it's a wonderful tool, we have to find ways within the structure of the legislation to figure out some flexibility, because it just completely locks down their schedule for a couple months at a time, is what it appears is going to be, and just interrupts the flow. I mean, we all are more successful, we have a good flow and balance to what we're doing. And just to bring that to your attention, not to harp on it, but at a time when I know we answer questions, right, during a budget season about administrative levels, it comes up every year, that we are struggling to meet the requirements of this mandate, and it's just worth talking about a little bit. So I just wanted to share that tonight, because I know they're in the midst of that as I go around on my building visits, and things are getting rescheduled out of necessity.
Right. Very good. All right, well, speaking of mandates and legislation, last week I was in Washington, DC, on behalf of CAEB for the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute, and this is where, we are there on the Hill with all our congressional delegation. I was with, or in company with, about 500 of my closest colleagues from around the country, and it really is a very, very interesting weekend, because we do spend a lot of time talking about some of the issues that are before us. As we talk about issues that are before us at state level, well, really, everything starts in Washington. And legislative priorities for this year's Congress really are just basically things that you've heard about before. The reauthorization of the ESEA, and also with that is the federal funding for education, and of course, the reauthorization of Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, which did get a lot of attention this year with a lot of congressional delegation that we have down there. So this is something that, you know, we've tried to pare down every year in terms of really being strategic with the goals that we have set before us through NSBA with our congressmen. But we did have very good visits with them. We do have their ear, which is really important. I can't say that for a lot of other states, but for Connecticut, we've met with all five of our congressmen and two of our senators, and they do know where we stand in terms of education, and that is really important as we continue, you know, the conversation going, not only on the federal level, but also bringing it back home, home to Hartford. So it was a very, very intense conference, but it's great to find out what also is going on around the country in terms of these three priorities that not only we are dealing with, but are also being dealt with with every district around the country. So that was the weekend, and also, I'm just pleased to announce, and I was elected to the National School Board Association Boards of Directors for a three-year term. So I would be one of three representing the northeast region here. There are 25 on the board, so it'll be another layer of education involvement for me now, really at the federal level.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So anyway, I thank you really for my support also, because if I didn't have a board behind me and able to, you know, pursue these at different levels between, you know, local, state, and federal, so I do appreciate all of your support, and I know I can count on all of you, you know, when I need to have these conversations. So as you know, I always bring home presents for everyone, but this time, the presents are for the students. So by and will or not here this evening, but I do have for you, Brian, and this is Stand Up For Public Schools. This is really the mantra that we wore on the Hill, and I gave the congressional delegation each of these, so they're well aware. And here is your own bracelet. Stand Up For Public Schools. I hope you wear it proudly, and, you know, this is why you are here on this board, just as we are. So that is it. All righty. With that, we will move along now to Recommended Actions. Exhibit one, Approval of Minutes of the January 29th Executive Session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And what abstention? Thank you, Tom. Two abstentions. All right. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit two, Approval of Minutes of the January 29th Special Meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion passes. We are now on to Exhibit three, Approval of Minutes of February 3, 2015 Budget Workshop. Do I hear a motion?
Double.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, I will abstain, as I was not here. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit four, Personnel.
There's nothing for the board to vote on tonight. I just wanted to give you an update that we had a resignation of a tech head teacher, Michael Vaughn, from high school, and we found his replacement, Daniel Warner. He'll be starting right after the President holiday recess, and we're happy to have him on staff at the Simsbury Public Schools. He actually did some student teaching with us, did a phenomenal job, so we're very, very excited to have Dan back.
Good. Thank you. All right. We are now on to Exhibit five, Donation to PTO Cultural Enrichment Committee.
So we have a generous donation from all five of our elementary PTOs totaling $5,457. And as the board is used to now, this is our method of funding Cultural Enrichment Committee programming that benefits all of our schools, and we would request your approval of this gift.
Great. Do I make a motion? We approve the gift? Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you again. Once again, we thank you, thank the PTO for your continued generosity for our school system. All right, we are now on to Exhibit six, Approval of Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Great. So Burke's going to walk us through this process a little bit. As you know, we've had several conversations about the capital improvement plan. We looked at things a little differently this year, starting with conversations with our principals about a real kind of five-year outlook, and now started to try to incorporate that into the capital process that we do have. Last time, we had some various presentations, including some detail around Henry James. I think it's important to note that when we go to the town meeting and we go to referendum, that it's voting on the first year in the capital plan, but when you vote to support the plan, you support the plan as it's stated for the five years. So Burke, you can take it from there.
Sure. Just from your agenda packet and your budget binder tonight, you had in your regular packet a copy of the memo dated the 10th that outlines the three projects during the first year, and also had a copy of the Administrative Recommended Six-Year CIP. So at the cover tonight, we have one for your budget binder to insert the, in the CIP tab, and that's the first of the tabs that you will be given this evening. So as Matt mentioned, we did the presentation on the 29th about all of the projects within the six-year CIP, and given the town charter that this be submitted to the first selectments by the 15th, tonight is the night that we're asking you to approve, with particular focus on that first year of the three projects, the District Network Infrastructure Project, the Climate Control Phase One, and the Central School Roof Replacement. The only one that would trigger the need for a referendum would be the climate control. So I'm just, we're here to answer any further questions that you have.
Burke, what's the dollar figure again to trigger the referendum?
It's actually a percentage of the overall town budget, so it's been interpreted as 1 percent. There's some differences in different sections of the charter.
Okay.
It's 1 percent of the total town and Board of Ed budget.
Got it.
So last year, it was about $1 million.
All right. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Double.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All righty. We will move on with this. We are now on to Exhibits seven, Approval of Final Plans for Squadron.
Right. So we have the first of two main office security projects, and they're each in a parallel track with the State Bureau of School facilities for funding. And for board members, you have a smaller version, starting with Squadron, you'll see on the right-hand side of the plans, you've got the same exact thing that's going to be projected on the screen. First one is labeled demolition, so that's where we're going to start, and then you'll also have one for Henry James. In terms of what the purpose of this evening is, we are preparing to go to the state on March 3, and we have been working, the Public Building Committee has chosen the architectural firm for this project of Jukinski Humes, and Al Jukinski has been our primary contact. We had the opportunity to review various drawings, and Meg and her team were part of this process, and ultimately, we have the plans and specifications, along with a professional cost estimate that was hired through this contract. And we're going to just show you a bit about how these projects meet the needs that were ultimately spelled out in the project educational specifications, which I also included a couple pages from earlier this year when we submitted the application back in June following last year's CIP process. So the purpose this evening is to look at both the plans and the cost estimate and make sure that it meets the intent of the project. So to start moving forward with that, I wanted to just highlight, and I'm going to use this red marking, I'm trying not to get Mike and Todd, given the warning. But this first sheet, you're not going to get a lot out of it. I really wanted to highlight on this lower section, this is the existing area to be demoed. What it does show you is that you enter the building, and the nurse's office is currently here. So you would enter the building, there are no windows here, so you don't have a good site access. The main office is here, so you come into the building, and then there's offices here. So that is the before. That's the existing. What comes out of this project, the primary purpose is to improve security, and this project is approximately 2,900 square feet, so it's a reconfiguration, starting with the main vestibule here. It would be similar, but it would be pulled out a little bit for two purposes. The first is, it's not currently meeting the ADA code for that size, and then secondly, it gives you the capability of adding this door here, and that is important, because once the school is locked, anyone looking to gain access would have to have a buzzer entry here and come through this main lobby. So you would have new windows installed here, which would give all this area of office staff both visual access from the front and to people entering. And so that is really the primary access control aspect of the project. We've also shown a new seed office here, so that if people are just coming to see seed, they don't have to go through the regular main office. And after hours, we now would have the capability of doors here and here to close the rest of the building when seed may be running programs, you know, early or late in the Essentially, to just describe the office layout now, the nurse's office is on the opposite side, where currently it's here, and you'd have the principal's office, assistant principal, and a break sort of kitchen area, and a main conference room here. The restrooms would be off of the nurse's office here, and they are now, would be ADA accessible, and we actually would be increasing the total number. So that's a quick overview of-
Conference room about the same size as the one that's there in a new place?
It is, but slightly better for people get to get in and get around the tables.
Right.
One of the hopes, and we were able to do that through this design. So that is the overview of what this project would focus on. In order to go towards, go forward with the estate process, there's a requirement that before it can go out to bid, it has to have approval in this PCT process. March 3 is where we're hoping to know what that timeframe will be, and then it'll be a very focused effort in the spring to get that project out to bid, to make sure we can get it done over the summer, because that is the key goal of this project. From a cost estimate point of view, you have attached an estimate that was done by KV Associates out of Boston with a project total of $736,935. The overall budgeted amount from the CIP was $1,050,000, excuse me, and we have details on the various aspects of this construction project. We are looking comfortable here, and would entertain, you know, questions or issues that you have.
I'm sorry, Burke, one more time with the money?
The current cost estimate that has been created for the project is $736,935. Overall project money budgeted was-
Where is that in here?
Okay, in your-
I don't think you have.
In your-
Pack, in your exhibit?
Agenda packet, you should have, not that was handed out tonight, but in your, that's just the drawing, but, right. So in your packet that was signed out should be on your-
Thank you.
You've got, you've got a cover sheet dated November 12 from J.H. Jukinski Humes. And so we would, for both projects that we're going to talk about tonight, there's a hazardous materials process that we're underway with. Those are separate from the architects' contracts, and so we've started those. There's obviously been a lot in the news about the importance of getting the various testing done, and it's a part of the state requirement that we come forward with a sense of the testing of what we would be in for. There's an allowance in these cost estimates, because they don't yet know what they're going to find, but that's what this testing that we've started is going to be able to tell us. There's a second round that we're in the process of undertaking, and once that is known, we'll be able to update the process. The Public Building Committee, to explain, is also doing the same exact process under the State EDO 42. It's a form that we have to bring to this meeting in March. It would require both Public Building Committee and the Board of Educations, yes, on this project, and we will be meeting tomorrow evening with the architects and the Public Building Committee. We'll be looking in greater detail, as they have been part of this process since the hiring of the architects back in the late summer, early fall. So I'm looking for any questions that I can help out with, but we would request that you, as outlined in the motion, draft it in the exhibit. We'd ask for your approval.
Any questions?
What was the square footage again, Burke, on the-
The square footage on this is 2,900, $2,850 is what the gross square footage is in the cost estimate.
And that's for both the conversion of the existing office to the other uses?
This is, yeah, this is all of the area that would be renovated and reconstructed, so it's essentially, you know, all this area, including this vestibule.
Right. Okay.
So Burke, the start, construction date would be June?
The goal would be to have the contract signed and have them start as soon as school is out.
School is out.
Because from the asbestos renovation point of view, and there's known to be some of that work, that has to happen once children are out of the building.
Right.
So we're supposed to try to get it started the first day, because summers are relatively tight schedule, and a lot of things have to happen in terms of the approval by the state to be able to go out to bid, and then, of course, getting successful bidders and getting a contract signed. So it'll be a busy spring, just to try to maximize the ability of the contractor to mobilize and get started so they can finish and get ready for school to start again.
So the anticipated completion is before school?
It is.
Before, or around that time?
That is the stated, that is the stated goal of the project.
And Burke, we've already kind of, we've already, you know, approved funding of roughly $300?
Right. The town has approved $1,050,000, and that is the net amount, or that's not the net amount, that's the gross amount. So then this anticipated school funding will give us a partial reimbursement, roughly 33 percent, but there's various aspects that they deem to be eligible and ineligible costs. So that's part of what we're going through with the architects now, trying to make the best listing of all those things that would be, it would be reimbursed for, maximize that. So the net to the town, as we show on the six-year CIP list that you just looked at earlier tonight, you have that assumed grant funding, and then there's a net. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? No. All right. Let's, looking forward to this. We have no more snow days, but as soon as we can. All right. Can I have a motion?
Boo the Board of Education approves the final plans and project manual as prepared for bidding, along with professional cost estimate for Squadron Line Main Office Security Project.
Good. Hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approves. Thank you. All right. We are now on to Exhibit eight, the Approval of Final Plans for Henry James Memorial School.
Thank you. So Henry James has, at its core, the same goals of security, to improve the main office functioning, and in addition to that, there's also first-floor renovation and improvement to this project. So that is the major difference. But from a process point of view, it works exactly the same. Our meeting with the state is March 4, one day later. The architects that we've worked with, that were hired by the Public Building Committee, is the firm of Castle Booze, and our direct project contact has been Ben Monroe, and he will be also here tomorrow evening with the Public Building Committee to make a similar presentation. For this project, the scope that I'm showing here in your attached documents, there's a one-page update to the cost estimate summary, and it looks like this, and it's attached to the plans. So that is a cost estimate summary, and then there's about 14 pages of cost estimate behind that. I'll speak to that later, but I just wanted to note that that is new, because it's about $15,000 less. There was an area that they were able to revisit to help lower the cost estimate. Scope of work for this project, you're seeing the whole first floor here, and the shaded area of the hallway is where we will be looking to do replacement of the existing carpeting. There's a remediation portion of that with the mastic and the, has asbestos and PCB that has to be remediated, and then new flooring put down. There would also be lockers, as you recall, to be replaced in areas of the first floor, and there would be some limited areas of ceiling replacement. Specifically, this area here on the south wing, there would be, in the ceiling, there would be a sprinkler line running from an existing area here that would go down to this area that would be the new main office area. So that's the areas that are not about the office renovation. In terms of the particular layout, you've seen a conceptual version of this in years past. This is the new main office, where the existing one, of course, is, those may not know it, is here, in this area. So if someone entering the building here-
In the middle of the building.
We now have a flow that looks very much like this Squadron Line project, where this is a narrower vestibule. They take the existing one and narrow it a bit to get more room for this main office. But when these doors are locked, you'd have to buzz in here to get in, access to the building. Here would be the main office reception area, and then you'd be allowed to gain access to this hallway. So you'd have the assistant principal's office, principal's office, and a conference room, which is certainly an improvement to what they have now. And this is the basic concept. Again, there's very good visual access here with windows across the front, and then there'd be windows in here from this area here, so staff can see who's coming into that vestibule. So the same basic concept there. Little, just a little bit of information here in this last slide. Picturing again, you're coming down the main hallway. This is just showing that the existing office now is going to be renovated into a classroom, and there's nothing that has to be done. It's the same, we're not, you know, altering this room footprint. It's the same, we're not, you know, altering this room footprint. The only change here that we have would be, there's two offices now that are accessed off of this interior, there's an interior hallway. It would be proposed for a guidance and a school psychologist's office to make those offices a little bit larger and just be able to be accessed right off the hallway. So that would be the work to create the offset for what is now classroom space that would be made into the main office. Questions on that floor plan before I talk about the cost estimate?
Is there even one door? One door to Henry James?
No, there's a back, there's a back access that's used off of the parking lot, and then there's others. But in terms of if you're parking, and once the building is closed, the only way to gain access unless you have a staff fob would be to go through that front, to that front door. And currently, you can get buzzed in, but then you can go in any different direction without actually checking in with somebody. So this project is, the base bid from the summary that you have in front of you is $881,335. We have some add alternates, and we have some deduct alternates, and if we were to take the deduct alternate, which would actually take this, some of these office area renovations for those two smaller offices, they were not in the original specific scope, but it was adjacent, and it seemed to make sense. If we took those out, there's a savings of $57,411,000 estimated that would bring the lowest possible cost at 823,924. And this project, in terms of the hall, when you take into account all of the hallway space plus the office space, it's 12,824 square feet. So this one, because of the hazardous material aspect of it, is something that we're also doing further testing, and we're going to have a much tighter budget in this project. We have a total appropriation of $1,055,000, so very similar to the price of the other, or the budget, excuse me, for the other Squadron Line project. But there's, as you can see, there's more involved here. It's not just the office configurations, there's also all of that, all of the hallway work. In terms of what the adds are, the add alternate one and add alternate two, add alternate one would be extending the area where some of the flooring would be replaced, and add alternate two would be doing a little bit more of the ceiling and lighting in some of the other hallway areas. But as of now, the budget's tight for this, so those would be adds that would be nice, but I'm not sure that we'd be able to do that.
And again, the total square footage?
The square footage of this one is 12,824 square feet, and that's because there's not only the office and classroom areas, but also that hallway area down the north-south corridor, and then part of the way down to the west, which would be going up.
Burke, from a financial management perspective, you're the guy, do you manage both of these ongoing projects simultaneously?
Yes, yes. With, you know, having the Public Building Committee being actively involved, having the architect being involved, and the hope would be for at least one of the projects to have a clerk of the works to help with the management. So Squadron Line would be the one where I would see that we would have the funding to do that.
Yeah, it should be busy, right?
Yes, yes. And then we're planning the next round.
All righty. And again, to start this right after school is out.
Same, right, same exact, same exact issues where we can't begin the remediation work until children are out of the building. In both cases, we would not be able to do our summer programs in these buildings, which ironically are both the buildings where we typically do that. But that's been known for a period of months, so we'll be able to utilize other school buildings and, you know, work to get this, to get both of these projects approved and out to bid, and ultimately get those construction contracts signed. So working very closely, and I would be remiss, I did not mention earlier in answer to your question, because we work with the Public Building on all these projects for school construction grants. Also, Jeff Shea, who is the Director of Capital Projects and engineer, is a real asset, and we work closely together on all these projects. Steve Switchell also is involved, obviously, with facility details, so there's quite a few folks having involvement from the security end. Jason Casey also has involvement for the cameras and monitors, things of that nature.
All righty. Anything else? Okay. With that, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this project? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, motion passes. All right. Good luck, Burke, you've got two big.
Tomorrow night's.
Thank you.
He's gonna be a busy man.
He's gonna be a very busy man, so. Well, it's also good to hear reassuring to hear that, because of both projects going in simultaneously, that the summer programs won't be constricted.
They'll just be moved.
Yeah, they'll be moved, but they'll still continue on.
Back to the audit when we did that.
I mean, this is just so basic and for the safety of our students, and it's very critical, so I'm glad we're moving forward.
All righty, now we are moving on to information and reports. Exhibit nine in your packet, and for those in the audience, and we now will have the presentation of the superintendent's 2015-2016 budgets.
Okay, I am going to leave you and go over to that table.
Absolutely.
All right.
All righty.
Try not to kick all the cables off while I do that.
Yeah, don't touch anything.
Right. So before I get started, I actually want to thank members of my administrative team for coming out tonight, because this presentation really is, while it's a start in a sense for us, it's the culmination of the work that started with Building Administrators several months ago, and I appreciate their efforts and their thoughtfulness, and I think we put forward something tonight that we can all feel good about and be proud of in terms of how we want to move forward the school system into next year. So, thank you guys, I know you're busy, and I appreciate your time.
And the middle school is open house today.
Yes, Brian had a, Brian Jeff had a conflict.
That's right, that's right. All righty.
So, all right. To start with the number, because I have learned if I don't do that, then we look ahead. So.
Why are you looking at me?
The overall proposed budget number is $67,221,317, and represents about a $1.6 million increase, or when we talk about percentages, a 2.47 percent increase over last year's funding. And really, the way I'll try to break this out tonight, and we'll certainly have time for discussion and questions, is in three sections. Really provide some context of some of the challenges we're faced with, some basic enrollment information we've seen before, talk a little bit about a return on investment, because I think that's important for us to speak about publicly, how our students do when we commit different resources, what does that look like in the end, and then go into some of the particular drivers, some of the different pieces that, in requests, that are making up that 2.47 percent increase. So anytime we sit down and think about moving forward with a planned budget of this magnitude, we look to our district vision, our set of core beliefs is really grounding documents for us, and this board participated with administration and others last year in a process to really refine our district vision. We feel good about where we are with things. I've included some of our belief statements on the slide, not to go over them all, but just to let you know that this grounds what we are about in the Simsbury Public Schools, and really helps our planning process. But at the end of the day, our goal was really to create a budget that upholds our outstanding programs, keeps them intact, keeps us moving forward, and does so in a really fiscally responsible manner, and I think we've done that. And kind of our tag and our slogan this year is really looking to create great schools for each and every one of our students that walks through our doors. This is a format that we've utilized in each of the past two years when I've presented the budget. This is my third budget to present to the board, and thinking about different pressures that we're faced with. Some that alleviate pressure to our budget, help us to drive costs down, others that we need to respond to that bring cost upwards. So enrollment, certainly, we've been able to take advantage of our, what has been a significant decline in our student population over recent years. Last year, it was instrumental in our ability to present to you a 1 percent budget. We were able to offset the majority of the salary and contractual fixed costs with a reduction of 10 classroom positions. While enrollment still is a driving factor that's allowing us to alleviate some costs, we've talked about just from a class size standpoint and projections, we're not in a place to eliminate as many positions as we did last year and stay within our core guidelines. The uncertainty, certainly of the state budget, and the governor has not presented his budget, I think we have a couple weeks left.
He presents on the 18th.
The 18th, okay, to see what happens with our educational cost share grant. Certainly, there are questions about that. I know the Board of Finance is waiting to hear that as well, so that can become a factor. The joint efforts that we've had with the towns, in particular, the insurance consolidation of last year, we will re-benefit that for many years. I'll talk a little bit about that later on, but that's a key factor in our ability to keep costs down with our insurance line items this year. The cost of living increase, we had a three-board meeting as we kicked off the budget process a couple months ago. While the Board of Finance, I want to make clear, hasn't given us a steadfast guideline or really feedback there, they talk about that cost of living increase as a number that they think about in their planning process and what that looks like. So that's at about a 1.7 percent. So as we plan thoughtfully, I mean, that's a number that we definitely need to, I believe, pay attention to. On the flip side, we have our contractual obligations that, in totality, are almost a 2 percent increase. We've talked about some class size issues at the middle school that we need to address, certainly innovations in technology we presented last week at the workshop, and then special education costs, both with trying to improve our transitional programming and look at trying to find the right number to move forward as we address outplacement costs over the past couple years. This is a bit of a busy slide, but I think it gives us a good historical context. This is a slide that really looks at our overall enrollment trends, which is the line that has a bit of a smoother curve to it, and enrollment numbers go up the left vertical axis. It basically goes back to the 80s. This takes the information we have in our historical binder that we go to and takes a look at different trends over time. So we put this together, not to answer the question, but to give a bit of perspective to what it looks like in terms of corresponding budget increases and enrollment trends. We're often asked to answer, well, how does your budget go up if your enrollment goes down? So a historical, kind of contextual, look at that can show that over time, there's been no one-to-one correlation in the exact manner between enrollment and a budget increase. But I think what we do draw attention to is while enrollment has been down over the course of the past several years, particularly since 2008-9, when the economy got hit hard, we have been extremely thoughtful and really tight, I think, in terms of the budgets we've moved forward. That culminated last year in the lowest budget presentation with the historical data that we have with a 1 percent increase. While we have thought about that decline in enrollment, we've kind of coined the phrase responsible reductions of staffing levels. We recognize that as we get smaller with our student population, we certainly cannot retain the same number of staffing levels. So that's always a main driver we look at when we kick off the budget planning process. And this is just a look at staffing levels from 2008-9 in terms of full-time equivalent positions and where we are in a projected sense into next year. And you can see that we've reduced over 52 full-time positions, or about 7.5 percent of our total staffing levels as enrollment has declined. At the same time, I want to bring light to the fact that the board has been very supportive, and I think we've been real creative in certain program enhancements that have moved the district forward, and I think that's what we need to continue to think about. While we reduce certain staff levels, what portion of dollars do we reallocate to get better at what we do? And I've listed some of those programs that we've supported, and this board has supported in the past years, from the instructional coaches that have helped us smooth the transition to the core standards, to full-day kindergarten, the learning clusters and elective opportunities that make the high school experience so unique. We'll talk about those in a little bit, and of course, the reading intervention program. All certainly have a cost to them, but a benefit as well. A piece of data we wanted to put before you this year, because I think it's important when you look at where our requests have been, particularly with staffing, is while our overall student enrollment has decreased pretty significantly, so if you look at 2010-11 to this year, we've decreased close to 500 students. Our special education population, the students that have IEPs in our district, that population has stayed relatively flat. We've still made some significant reductions over that timeframe to special education staffing, and I think that's the area that we're trying to get right right now. We're doing a lot of assessing in that area, figuring out what resources we need. But I think it's important to note that we're not seeing the same trend line. It's not an equal decline in terms of overall population. So cost declines won't be the same in those two areas. Per pupil expenditure, it's a number that we look at on an annual basis, the 2013-14 per pupil expenditure, I believe this number is still unaudited at this point. Puts us a little bit over $15,000 per student, a bit above the Derg average, but below the state average. One of the things that has driven an increase in this number has certainly been the decline in enrollment, the recent decline in enrollment, and also the fact that we have included our open choice attendance grant money now, which is close to $1 million, as an overall expenditure when we file our EDO 01 report to the State of Connecticut. That's the correct way to do it. In the past year, that number hadn't been filed in that report in that area. So that's, in the short term, caused a bit of an inflation in this particular statistic. All right, this is the fun piece to talk about, you know, how we do as a district in terms of the programs we have built, in terms of the results that our outstanding students give us. So again, trying to create great schools for all, ooh, choking up, for all of our students. Let me grab a quick squiggle water here. So we always go out and want to look for different data points and different ways to talk about the success of our school district. And this is a survey that's out there now in a rating system that's out there that different districts are utilizing in their budget processes to talk about comparatives. This is a system that looks at different data points when looking at an overall school system in terms of teacher qualifications, resources, and how the students achieve, puts together a rating system, asks for feedback, there's a survey component to it as well, where students can offer feedback and parents can offer feedback. And you can see that we're in the top 10 of the districts in the State of Connecticut, second in Hartford County with Glastonbury at number five, but really a nice achievement for our district. The bottom section of this chart is the high school component of this, where you can see we are number five overall in the State of Connecticut, along with Glastonbury, the only Derg B, and the Derg is the reference group, in our Derg, in the top 10, and certainly top in Hartford County. So I think some nice kudos from an overall standpoint in terms of what people view the Simsbury Public Schools as. Wanted to touch on Simsbury High School over the course of the next couple slides, and I don't want my elementary administrators to think I'm ignoring the success that they have at the elementary schools, but we choose to, in this presentation, look at the high school, because it's really a culmination of the overall experience of our students, K-12, and the efforts of everybody. One thing that we're very proud of, we touched on last year, and we often have to answer questions about when we talk about budgeting, are the elective opportunities and the unique opportunities we have for our students at Simsbury High School. And Neil, under his leadership, along with Aaron, have done a great job looking at course sequences in our elective areas. We call them the learning clusters, so we have So we have various courses in each one of these start areas that students can gravitate towards as an area of interest. And when we talk about readying students for college and for careers, these are the type of courses that we're talking about that go beyond the required graduation courses that students need to take. And this is really what makes Simsbury High School, from an academic standpoint, very unique. We pulled out just, Neil, help me with this, just pulled out some data points from a few of the courses to say, hey, what did they look like last year? What does enrollment look like this year? And you can see just some of the popularity and how some of these courses are growing. The biomedical strand of Project Lead the Way, up 28%. A great renewed interest in the business courses we have at Simsbury High School, up 50%. Computer science is an area that we really celebrated this year and brought some real positive attention to, and students came before the board a few weeks ago and talked about their experiences and how engaging those classes are, up 26%. And the theater portion of our music program, up 84%. So, you know, we have supported these opportunities and student enrollment has flourished in these opportunities. Conversely, I think this is an area of real challenge we need to think about in the next three to five years. As enrollment shrinks at Simsbury High School, what programs do we really need to maintain and think about advocating for recognizing that we can't always have everything? Achievement results, something we always take a hard look at. In the yellow on that chart is a new set of data points we were able to talk about this year for the first time that we're really excited about. How do our students do when they leave Simsbury High School and go on to the university level? We now have the ability to track our students and receive pretty detailed data reports. And within six years of graduation of high school, which allows for additions in majors, allows for a gap year, allows for a transfer year, you can see that our students' success rate in college graduation is the highest in Hartford County, and I think is worth celebration and something that we should talk about because the programs that the board has supported over the years, that the leadership has put into place, and that the students are taking advantage of are certainly yielding great benefits at the college level. Achievement results, on the right-hand side, we talk about participation in advanced placement course, the rigors of an advanced placement course being the most important factor in determining student college success. And you can see the growth over time as we've opened up more opportunities for students. We now have 72.5% of our students taking at least one AP course, and I think that's really something we should be proud of and something to celebrate. The last two data points to share are SAT scores. SAT is something certainly, as administrators, we're all paying attention to because it's involved in the conversation around S-Back and the potential of potentially getting rid of or moving that 11th grade assessment and possibly looking at the new generation of SAT as that test. And we already have a 90-plus percentage of our students taking that test, so it would be a good fit for our school community and something we would advocate for. But you can see in maroon, the Simsbury scores, kind of the scale scores there compared to comparable districts or our own reference group. And you can see that we outperform our own reference group pretty significantly across the different areas of math, reading, and writing. The PISA exam was something that we, you know, we shared with enthusiasm earlier in the year to the board. I know I talked about this actually at convocation. Neil kicked this off in a great talk to his students. And the PISA exam is an international exam that compares performance across 34 highly industrialized countries. And we participated this in a random sampling of our students. The data came back very positive and was a reflection of just how prepared our students are. And when you hear all the conversation about the state of public education in our country, I think this helps to shift our context a little bit between the data points of how our students perform in college and at a graduation level and how our students perform comparably internationally, we're in pretty good shape and have quite a bit to be proud of. We were not outperformed on this exam in any sense. The other piece I wanted to touch on that's equally as important as the academic experience is the overall social and emotional learning and how are the cultures of our school. And this is not something I wanted to leave out in a budget presentation because the climate of our schools is that important, and we've taken quite a bit of time over the course of the past 10 years I've been involved in the district in really looking at our programs at the elementary level and now up through the middle and the high school level with various leaders taking the charge in their school. Still have work to do, but I think we have a great foundation of student success and collaboration in different ways to look at improving and maintaining outstanding cultures and climates within our schools. All right, so to put some of the dollars and put some of the numbers to the overall presentation tonight, I'll take you through some of the different drivers and some of the significant costs that are in the budget. So it really starts with contractual obligations, some of these other bullets. I'm not going to read them all to you tonight, but it's some of the areas of focus that we've talked about in previous presentations. So there are not going to be a bunch of surprises here tonight, the various workshops and presentations we had, starting with special education, the technology, Sue's staffing presentation are all incorporated in this budget as main drivers. So I'm just going to revisit briefly the technology request. We're requesting $111,000 in additional technology funding under John Cia's leadership and collaboration with the principals. We've put forward, and I talked to you in our last meeting, about kind of a three-year vision of what our technology plan looks like, ending in a one-to-one model at the high school and really increasing access at the other levels. This $111,000 would get us going in that direction in a very positive sense. This chart shows what hardware we would be able, what devices we would be able to procure for that $111,000 across the various levels. We also at the workshop, and I'll touch on it later as well, talked about a significant sized grant that we're in process of working on with the state of Connecticut and extremely hopeful about, that could even potentially, if the board chooses, put us in a position to alleviate some of this burden to the operating budget, but also still move forward with the plan. Staffing is a significant driver, as always, and Sue did a detailed presentation on the staffing proposals that our leadership team put forward with central offices' support. This is just a summary of what they are and the rationale, and I'll move through those at the different levels. At Terrafill School, this is actually the third year that Scott has put forth a .5 request of increase for a special education teacher. And that's really to level out some of the caseload management and some of the burden and challenge of being in a smaller school and being the only teacher in that school but having seven grades to manage and just the logistics of that. We're requesting in addition to that, .33 are some partial FTE to bolster our math intervention program. These are non-certified staff members. We just don't have enough staff right now to meet the needs of the students, and this will also allow us to support students that may have an identified need in an area of extension, which isn't something we've had an opportunity to do, and we have many students who may require that. Almost a full FTE request, a .9 request in a pre-K paraprofessional. This is to address students that have needs in our birth-to-three program, which is a partial day program, and these students will now move to full-day kindergarten, require support. So it's just an adjustment of appropriate staffing based on students that we already have, and we can project out what their needs are. This is offset, really these elementary staffing requests are pretty well offset by a reduction of three classroom sections that are enrollment-driven. So when I talked about enrollment being kind of a downward pressure, this is where we're able to take advantage of a decline of three FTE, so three classroom positions, and still stay well within the guidelines, which is important. Middle school, two full FTE, one request for special education to rectify caseloads, also transitional programming support, and then a 1.0 content area teacher. And as you remember, that's not a single teacher teaching a subject. What this is will help to alleviate the class size by adding a .2 in English, a .2 in math, a .2 in science, and so forth. One additional class on that eighth-grade team will allow us to even out our class size. I know you've heard a lot about those challenges this year, but in a nutshell, again, a year ago, we had five classes over the guideline. We now have 35. So this will enable us to get that piece in much better position moving forward. And at the high school, some smaller FTE requests of a .5 special ed teacher, again, to support transitional needs, address caseloads, and a job coach, which is about that transitional support of our special education students. So a job coach would be a non-certified person who would go out basically to job sites, to internship sites, and support our students in the field, which is a huge part of these students' ability to learn how to be successful and become independent, and we're really excited about that. So when we roll those requests into dollars and into drivers, just to talk about what that looks like, from a staffing standpoint, we talk about certified, non-certified staffing. You can see that breakout, $234,000 in certified staffing or a .36% increase. Non-certified staffing, close to $100,000. We have talked at great length about the outer district tuition costs and special education transportation costs. Last year, the board was very supportive in approving additional funds in that line item. We had projected out and hoped to bring that number down a little bit in terms of overall students in an outplace situation. That hasn't happened, so we need to really look at how we budget appropriately for that. You'll recall, we closed a significant gap in the operating budget last year. We did that really through utilizing our IDEA grants. I know Burke talked about that a little bit last time, and the fact that these are two-year grants that have a layover year, and you use the flexibility of that layover year in funding to address some of these shortfalls. We've done that. We now need to rebuild the flexibility in those grants moving forward, which is why we have the additional funding requested in that area. Technology, we talked about, and also an increase in our software and licensing, which Burke presented about at the workshop to you. So overall, when we think about program improvement and dollars we need that are new, $769,682 are an overall increase of 1.19. So to make that all tie out, we have this format that we've become familiar with over the course of the past couple of years. The top portion of this is additions, and you can, it's pretty self-explanatory, but you can see the first four are related to staffing. The first two are basically fixed costs, negotiated contracts, or dollars that we're allocating in reserve for the couple of contracts that are under negotiation right now. The technology equipment of $111,000. You see additional equipment requests that we've talked through. Increase in athletics, I wanted to bring attention to, and I'll go back to that for a minute. We had the presentation from Neil and Dane in public several months ago, and we've talked about the pay-for-play model and certain challenges in that model as enrollment now goes down at the high school and participation will go down. But that doesn't necessarily mean right away the number of athletic teams goes down. So how are we going to rectify potential shortfalls in that budget? We know that if we absorbed into the operating budget what is essentially the cost of transportation, we could make that work. That could be certainly a conversation point as we work through the next couple of weeks and the board needs to improve a budget number. But all said, when we add up the roll forward of the organization with the new requests, it's 2.4 million and an increase of 3.73. And then we look for ways to offset those reductions. And the main way we do that is with retirements and enrollment-driven reductions. So you can see the seven certified staff retirements. We have five currently. We're estimating that we may have two more. That's within the average that we've fallen in in the past several years. That would allow us savings of $175,000. The decrease in three sections is an additional $234,000. And then the last two bullet points I wanted to speak of. At the workshop, we had presented a similar slide to you and talked through where we were at that point. We were at an overall increase of about 3.2%. But what we did have in the works were many conversations during that week and up till now were around our insurance, both on the pension contribution area as well as the health insurance. So we received some very positive news about the actuarially defined number for our defined benefit pension contribution. This is in large part due to the increased contribution of our employees, and the new actuarial projection allows us to decrease the number from last year, $116,000. So that's significant, and that's a result of a lot of people working together in a very positive way. The second decrease, which is quite sizable, $300,000, is really a result of the favorable levels of our internal service fund. So over the course of the last week, in consultation with Bob Lindberg, our insurance advisor, Burke and Joe Mancini, our finance director, feel very comfortable in the rate-setting process to reduce rates, keep our reserves at an advisable, healthy level, and we're able to reduce our number $300,000. So between those two items, between the last time we spoke and this time, we're able to move the budget a pretty significant downward manner, almost .6%. So you take all those reductions, where we are at this time, it's about $826,000. You net that out, that's our overall increase of 1.6 million and the 2.47% increase. I do just want to highlight a couple of areas because we did this when we talked at our workshop, and I think it's important to note. Areas we continue to think about as we analyze where we are with this number, the equipment number, which is still a sizable increase over last year's funding. That's an area Burke continues to look at and prioritize. As I said, the technology could be an area that we could look at and have further conversation about, as well as the athletics. So those are three areas we talked about that we could potentially have some degree, not a huge degree, but some degree of flexibility in. I thought I may make some movement in those areas from last week to this week. I chose not to because we were able to get so much movement on the insurance front, and this is a budget that is much lower than I thought it would be at this point, but still maintains the integrity of the request that the building administrators put forward on the personnel side. So I'm pretty pleased with that. Overall, in summary, we just went through what the numbers look like. The last piece of this presentation that we can certainly open it up for discussion and questions is the non-public school portion of the budget, where we are requesting an additional $4,000 or a .75% increase. The budget in totality is $537,000. And just to refresh the memory, it's three main categories. It's the nursing and psych services that we provide, the private schools. It's the transportation that we provide, the private schools, and there's a park and recreation line item, which is basically field maintenance. So just in terms of a bit of cost escalation in those areas, that's where we get the $4,000. So I will turn it back to you, and Burke and I, and Sue and Aaron can certainly field any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Matt. That was very condensed. And with that, I will open up to questions. Tom?
So, Matt, thank you very much. Just talking about recommendations, and you highlighted in your discussion how many classes are currently over the recommended. So this budget, as it's presented, would increase that, leave it kind of as is, or bring it back down? So kind of what's the forecast in terms of as you present this?
So middle school in particular, I mean, we'll always with that number of sections have a few that are over or under, and what you do is you look at the average and try to plan that way. The additional, believe it or not, the additional one FTE at the middle school would allow us to pull all 35 of those sections back within class-size guidance theoretically. I mean, you may have a couple that are over based on scheduling conflicts, but not due to peer numbers.
I also think, like you highlighted right off the bat in terms of the conversation that we had with the three boards in terms of finance, and I do think they're only going to be looking for kind of a costly-living type number coming from us. I don't know what my other board members think about that, but I mean, if 1.7% was kind of the benchmark, I know this is getting closer. I know this is getting close to that, but it would be good to have options prepared to present, because I know we went through that several times last year, if I remember right, right?
We did.
Okay. So I mean, it might be good just to be prepared.
Yeah. I think one thing we could, we could certainly do, Tom, is between now and when we get back together, which is the 24th, when the board is scheduled to vote on the budget, we could do, create, and we did this last year before we committed to any movement or making any decisions, is create a scenario. I mean, it will be difficult for us to get there, I'll say that, but we can certainly, and I think we will have to anyhow, to your point, I agree with you, create what we would call a reduction list with some rationale and some impact statements on what it would look like to go from the 2.4 to a 1.7, so that you have that information prior to making any formal recommendation on what this budget number is. And we've had the ability to talk with, you know, certainly I would talk with the team behind me in terms of prioritization and getting feedback on those things, but I would prefer, quite honestly, we do that now rather than get in a situation where we're making rash decisions on that. We can be a little more thoughtful if we come back on the 24th with that information, if it makes sense to you.
Other questions? Anything from last week?
I'm just looking at the, you know, the accounts that come after our required increases. And all I'm thinking is, as you start, if those, if this is where you're going to be maybe looking for those reductions, I think it's important for us to know, too, how long it's been before we've, how long it's been since we've really attended to each of those accounts.
Right. Yeah. Good point, and we can definitely put that together. Like, the technology piece would be particularly unique.
Right.
And I think we'd have to look at it that way. If we have the confidence we can secure this grant, which would allow us to move forward with the plan, but also cover some cost, it's unique. But to your point, that line item is in significant deficit to what it was years ago.
Right.
So this is where, you know, the reality of the budgets we've put forward in the past several years, you're starting to lose flexibility zones and lose places where you can move forward kind of creatively. But I think we can build a rationale for those things and show that...
Right.
...to board members when we get back together in terms of what, what that would look like. You know, Mike spoke at the, at the workshop pretty candidly about, not to put words in your mouth, but feeling like we've piecemealed the approach a bit on the technology front and really going out and seeing what some of the other cutting-edge places across the country are doing. We certainly can't have that information at the ready to make a decision, but we would like, and already have talked about it, to come back at, you know, at a future board meeting and present some of that data and start to look at what those various models look like. But I agree, we need a certain context to help you make those decisions.
For me, I think, you know, like, the equipment requests. I know we haven't had a lot of that. Like, there are some of these accounts that we really haven't given anything to in a long time, and I think it's important to know if those are some of the things we're going to be looking at...
Right.
...that it's been five years or whatever since we've actually...
I mean, I can't say unequivocally, I don't want to, I'm not adding shock value, but to go from 2.4 to 1.7, it's going to be people.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I mean, we can nip and tuck a little bit to demonstrate, you know, being frugal in these areas, but you can't eliminate equipment altogether because you need to keep the operation going. And we'll have to start making some decisions, I would say, first relative to non-classroom teaching positions. Take a look at those, have some honest discussions about those. But it will be, after several years of sub-two and the amount of staffing reductions we've taken, it'll be a challenge to not feel significant impact when having those conversations.
You know, I think the, when you look at this list here, the first few, the negotiated contracts and the estimated impact of contracts, not a lot we can do with those amounts. They're sort of fixed. The outer district tuition, transportation costs, there's nothing we can do with that, really. So I think, to your point, it comes down to people, and if you assume we had to get down by .8 of, not one full percentage point, but .8 of a percentage point.
The eight positions.
We've got to come down about 500,000, 520,000, 80,000 roughly, a position. You know, you're somewhere six, seven, eight positions.
That's right.
So I would encourage you to look hard at class size, particularly at the high school. You know, can we, we've talked about increasing class size in the senior year. The rationale would be they've got to get used to bigger class sizes to some degree anyway, but we're making the rationale fit our problem.
Yeah.
But I think if you could, if you could find a way to reduce by six or seven people, that, to me, is a more logical way to go at this than, you know, pull out 30,000 here and 80,000 there to get to 500,000. I just think, you know, talking about spending 125,000 on equipment in the context of what we do, it's...
Yeah.
It's really...
Really.
Neil's at the time of the year right now where he's, you know, looking at course, enrollment. We have those conversations on an annual basis. We have, you know, certain resources we've put in place that we value that are non-classroom impact in terms of, you know, coaches in different areas that we need to have discussions about. I mean, we value these positions, but when you have these hard conversations, those are the things you need to look at. We've started, Mike, that analysis a bit of if you alter, you shift class size, and what does that next layer potentially of reductions look like that just nudged it up over class size a little bit? How many can you capture there? So we've initiated that work in anticipation of some of these conversations, so we can, we can be ready to have that data for you.
Yeah, I think in addition to the standard sort of cuts list that we get every time we go through this, I think we really got to look hard at that issue and see, you know, sort of focus on that and say, here's what this would mean in class size, different grade levels and so on. At the end of the day, that's, that's how we close the budget gap, I think, if we have to get to 1.7.
Yep.
Matt, I appreciated you going through the clusters at the high school as well, because I do, you know, I interview a bunch of, a bunch of seniors as they're ready to go off to college, and I can't, almost every one of these clusters has turned on a kid who is now going to study in that field of interest. So it's just amazing what it does. And I know you're seeing an interest here, and I just think it's a really good thing. So I don't know if that's data that we track, because as you're talking, in the future, we might have harder and harder decisions to make.
Right.
But it'd be interesting to me, you know, I see it anecdotally, but I don't know if you guys collect it and kind of keep it someplace.
Absolutely.
But I think that would be really helpful.
Very good.
The other thing I think we have to look at is some form of redistricting, you know? I know that's, it's awful to have to go through that, and we went through it ten years ago.
Went through it.
I know I get lots of pushback by the time I get home tonight, but I just think we've got to look at those as alternatives. You know, if we're going to consider some of this stuff, we better put it on the table as an alternative, and, you know, we'll, I'm sure we'll hear from the community as to what they'd prefer.
Sure. All right.
Any other questions on that? I mean, I, you know, I understand you had a very good budget workshop last week, and you did not? You had a good workshop last week?
Moderator wants a hand waving. It was good.
Ask the question! I get the answer. But, so, so, you know, I understand, I'm, you know, as I was in Washington, listening to what was going on in the federal level, too, and thinking about what's going on, you know, back home in my own district, which is not quite uncommon, that what's really happening in Washington, we talk about these things. But, you know, again, I hear what you're saying, Mike, and hear what you're saying about everything, too, and a lot of this, and I'm concerned about what's coming down once Governor Malloy unveils his budget on February 18th, the pieces of the education budget that may also be cut then. And we do understand there are going to be some significant, significant cuts and hits to districts, and that also, you know, causes me to, to think about, you know, how are we going to make up for any kind of deficit when that approach is at the state level coming down to districts? So, so these are all things that, that we also need to, to keep in context. And again, you know, as we move forward, you know, we still, you know, made a commitment, you know, in this district and, you know, in the State of Connecticut, in education, you know, with Common Core and a number of other things here, that, that, you know, what's best for students and how we're going to move forward with that. So that's not something that we can, you know, push aside and take out, but... All right. Any other questions? All right.
Right. So we'll come back on the 24th. We'll have that data ready to talk through and discuss, and then we would be set, hopefully, to come to a decision on a number that the board's comfortable with to move forward. So...
If we want more time to think about it, do we have room after the 24th? Or do we have to vote on the 24th?
We have.
Your next meeting is March 10th, and you present for the finals March 11th.
We could have a special...
We could.
I just want to know if we have time to think about it.
You added a special meeting on the 3rd.
You could have had a special meeting on the 3rd if we needed more time.
Okay. So we're not locked into voting the same night you give us this information?
I guess not technically, no.
I like flexibility.
It is, it is possible if...
I like flexibility.
It is possible to have, I don't remember if we've done that in the past.
Well, we have.
I'm sure we have.
We haven't voted.
But...
We have.
If there are other questions or if we think we need more time...
That's all I'm saying.
Then we need to make that decision before the 24th, but in the meantime...
Do we have to make that before the 24th?
No, I think we would wait to see how the 24th goes.
No, we can make it that night.
Make it 24th, right, right.
If we're not comfortable, then we would add a special meeting.
Right.
It's going to go great. It's going to go great.
Thank you all for putting in a nice...
All right.
Everybody for turning up.
Thanks very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Good. All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for all of the administrators sitting here in the audience for all their hard work and diligence in also crafting the budget, so... All right. We are at the end of our information reports. We are now onto our second public audience, and anyone in the audience wishing to address the board may do so. I'm seeing none. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 24th at 7:00 PM in this room. And with that, I would also like to thank SCTV for videotaping our meetings and broadcasting them, rebroadcasting them out to the public. So with that, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you and good evening.